I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And you, um, let me know if there's something. Start with public comment if there is any?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Very good. Keep moving. Well, I think we have a student presentation up first. We've got Jacob here, so more is all yours.
Thank you. I don't see my slide up here though. That's the only presentation that was in that folder. It's the same slide as last.
Oh, it might be last month then, in March?
I might.
In March. You keep updating the same one, Jacob?
Yes. All right. So I'm actually gonna be doing two somewhat separate presentations today, 'cause I think I was at the last one, so it might be a little longer. This first one comes out of two stories, actually. I did six college visits, and what I noticed is that at college campuses, there tends, there tends to be more comfortable seating than high schools. Kind of obvious, but it was a little bit more direct, um, dramatic than I had thought. And the other story is in Mr. Rapples' room down there, the students had a competition so you could, like, make the best of the ring. For that in mind, I wanted to talk about the comfortability and adjustability of the desks. Now, I, in 2022, school purchased seats for some classrooms. On here, you can see I have highlighted in red the, the classrooms that have the new desks, the trapezoid desks, and classrooms in blue have old desks. Gray are classrooms that I used tables. Desks were purchased on, based on a teacher's survey. I haven't actually been able to confirm this because a lot of people, um, have left since then, so this is based on what teachers have told me. That there was a survey sent out, um, that said, hey, which desks would you like? And then desks were purchased. I don't know if it's based on how much input that was, but, um, students generally dislike the new desks. However, most prefer them to the old desks. Um, I wouldn't say, actually, I wouldn't say most, I'd say about half after I talked with more students today. Um, and these are the desks, the trapezoid desks. And first, I want to talk about their comfortability or just comfortability overall. Uh, most students agree that their desks aren't comfortable, um, and comfortability seating makes students feel valued, makes them more productive. Um, students are more productive in comfortable environments. This is actually a quote I got from our distributor, our distributor, Paragon. A study published in Journal of Learning Spaces found that students who had access to flexible seating options demonstrated higher levels of concentration and were less likely to become restless, distracted during lessons. And based on the last presentation I gave, where I tracked where students were going during study labs, fifty-five would go to the library. And I believe a big reason for that is the library has very comfortable seating options. Uh, they have couches and those really big red chairs that are very comfortable to sit in. Uh, next, I'd like to talk about the adjustability. Here, I actually have, uh, the Spanish classroom, just down the hallway here. Um, teachers with trapezoid desks find them very hard to arrange. That's actually where that little competition between freshmen originated. Um, because every teacher has either one or two room arrangements, 'cause it's very hard to adjust them. They only line at one angle, and they take up a lot of space when they don't. Um, it's not possible to stack the chairs either, so if they need to compress the classroom, all the chairs have to just be pushed to the side and piled. Um, and science classrooms are more efficient with table seating. I talked with the science department chair, Mrs. Hemway, about which seats were better for science classrooms specifically, 'cause it's so different than a lot of other classrooms. And she had said that, generally speaking, chemistry is a lot of group work, and they like to be able to turn and talk to their, you know, desk neighbor without having to pick up and move their desk. Um, we actually do have tables in two hundred four science classrooms, which is actually really nice. Um, now, the koi fish design, in my opinion, would have been the best option. Um, and you might even ask me, what is koi fish design? But it's actually, it would have been the same price as the trapezoid. Uh, I looked into this, and it's this. It's this desk, and it looks weird, I know. But we actually have some of them in the fax room down by the middle school. We had them for a while. And how this works is they fit really well together. You, they're so versatile, and you can adjust them at any angle you want to, and it, it makes a, it's very efficient for classrooms. The other thing I want to talk about is, as you see in here, these desks are hardly touching each other, um, and they're also a lot lighter than our previous desks, which means that when students sit down and they adjust, they're moving the desks constantly. So every three days to a week, teachers will have to say, uh, everyone, pick, pick up your desks, move them back to where they need to go. It's very easy to move, 'cause they're not propped up against other desks. Um, now, obviously, this isn't a huge issue, um, because the desks work. I know you guys, I think you did work your work sessions over there. Um, so they obviously work, and they work, they do their purpose. Um, but moving forward, I don't know when the next time we will be purchasing furniture, but I think we should keep in mind how students feel about these desks and old desks, um, when we do that. Are there any questions before I move on to the next section?
No, I learned some stuff, so thank you.
All right. And next, I'd like to talk about improving our outdoor athletic facilities. I don't pay a little kind of touch on this, uh, the last time we were in the this foyer, uh, but I'd like to elaborate just a little bit more. Um, these are the distances to the fields from each field. It's the distance to the parking lot, the bathroom, the concession stand, and the locker room. The locker room's gonna be a lot farther than anything else, because it's in the school, of course. Um, but what you should really pay attention to is everything highlighted in red is where someone would have to walk the distance of the football field just on grass to get there, um, which is very unfortunate for people who, uh, cannot walk very far, who are handicapped. Um, and so what I also did is I looked at other schools, Dundee and South Seneca in particular. I looked at Dundee because we got a pretty good superintendent from them, so maybe we can take some other good advice. But as you can see, it's very drastic, the difference. And what's more, if you look at those distances, they're all paved. And then, if you, if we actually take a look at the athletic facilities, what you'll notice is oftentimes the baseball field is up against the track or is closer than it is. In our case, I put Palmyra on here. This is actually from twenty fifteen. It's, they're currently undergoing renovations. I think they're putting in a turf baseball field, which is pretty cool. But as you can see, uh, there's a lot of dual-purpose space up in here. You can see in the softball outfield, Dundee uses that as their football, uh, practice grounds. And similarly, I think all three of these campuses actually have their soccer games on their football fields. Um, so potential improvements, just based upon looking at these other athletic facilities, would be building walking paths to the fields. That's a very simple one. And also, um, my solutions are gonna become increasingly less feasible, but I thought I should present them. That's interesting. Relocating concession stands slash bathrooms to a more central location. I don't know, uh, Bobby had said something about it was the booster clement of the concession stand, right?
Youth football.
Youth football, right. So this is more complications with that. Um, install removable fence for the baseball and softball fields. This actually comes out of, I told my dad when I was doing this presentation, he said, you need to talk about removable baseball field, I mean, a baseball, uh, outfield fence. And more specifically, I talked to our JV baseball coach, and he said, there's been talk about requiring sexual baseball games to have outfield fences, even if they be removable. Now, a very central location, and our baseball team has historically been very good, so we'd be missing a huge opportunity if we were, we had to stop hosting those. Um, and then improve the football field, so soccer can play on it as well. That's a big one. We've talked about that, I believe. And then, potential relocation of certain fields. This, I don't know how feasible this is, but I wanted to do it, 'cause it's interesting. If you look over here, this is what up at, uh, our ideal campus would probably look like, where we could have the baseball field there and the soccer field there overlapping. And of course, we would move the stands during baseball season, and because those sports don't enter loud, it would work very well. And we'd have a central campus right here, similar to what the other schools do, where we could have four sports, track, football, baseball, and soccer, all utilizing the same bathroom, the same concession stand, s- same access to the parking lot. Um, yeah, so that was just my pie in the sky idea of what a potential redesign might look like. Um, the next point I really wanna hammer down, and I'm sure everyone here has heard a lot, is the track and the fields. Um, in the season, we have forty-nine track athletes, fifteen senior athletes. It's the largest at Red Jacket, and despite this, we can't host a home track meet due to pole vaulting, high jump, and long jump. I talked to Ms. Bodine today. We actually can have six lanes and host meets. It's not advised, but we can do it. Um, and I remember it was three, right? We hosted three cross-country meets, and we had about thirteen pits. I understand that's less of a burden on the school, but it's still something we need to keep in mind of. And Red Jacket is centrally locate, centrally located in Section Five and out of our, um, and there's been over a hundred athletes who have graduated from Red Jacket without ever competing. Today, I went around the school and I asked, hey, when was the last time you hosted a home track meet? Asked maybe twenty-five different people, not a single one could answer. I asked people who had been at the school for twenty-plus years. I asked people who had had kids in the school. Asked some of my peers, who had older siblings. No one could tell me when the last time we hosted a varsity track meet was. I had one teacher say we'd never done it. Um, we have, I mean, Danny Nick Williams is an excellent pole vaulter. He's a freshman, and he can't even practice pole vaulting at our school. He has to go to a different school. But I was to go down to the gym and look at all the plaques on the wall, about half of them would probably be track athletes, and almost none of them actually part, actually competed at Red Jacket. So I feel like this should really be, this, this should be our priority as, like, athletic priority. Um, are you, are you, any questions?
I, I will just say, I've been impressed with the level of detail you put into every presentation. Not easy, given that you are not a senior academically what you do, so, um, really impressed with the data they can provide. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Did, and I'm assuming you did legwork to collect all that data, the, the measurements and stuff and all?
Yeah, I had to, I had to actually.
Yeah, I too, it was very, I.
I had to make all of these too.
I, I, I love, love hearing your perspective and the fact that you talk to so many people. Really appreciate the data. I'm gonna say, I, in my day job, just sort of a corporate environment, I see presentations all the time with way less data than you provided. So, well done, well done, and thank you very much for sharing that.
Thank you, guys.
Jacob, so what's your suggestion for a location of a pole vault pit?
Yeah, okay. Um, so I actually had talked with some people and talked to my dad, and he said we used to have a pole vault pit, 'cause my dad used to do the pole vault. I think it was where the concession stand is now, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I think in my, I have to go all the way through. In my redesign, I had kind of put it over here as just, you know, that's where it could fit, just as I copied and pasted that image in. Um, but if we do end up improving the track and relocating the concession stands, you know, it could, um, it could go back there. If we don't relocate the concession stand, it could fit pretty well right there. The other thing I had, um, thought of is going back to here. A lot of these campuses only have bleachers on one side, um, such as South Seneca. I know South Seneca, I was there for track yesterday, where they have a really nice bleacher, so does Dundee, and it's because they consolidate them. Um, and actually, if you go back to the numbers, I put in home stands, away stands, because they're way farther from everything, um, so it's just, and if we do move the stands, it does put in a lot of room for the jumping pits, so.
Jacob, I do want to tell you that right now, we are currently working with a new capital project, so all your information you have is not gonna go unnoticed, really. So we, we've been talking about an eight-lane track and not being able to host those things, so they are, I mean, not promising anything, but it's, it's like a priority, and it's on the list. It's being talked about by community members, by teachers, by the committee, by the superintendent, by everybody that's involved, so, you know, thank you for your hard work, but this has not gone unnoticed. And we've been, you know, worried about this for years, actually, you know, the athletic fields and the situation out there.
The, the track, the jumps as well, you know, the jumping that's there.
The high jump pit, yep.
And the high jump pit.
And the concrete.
And practice.
Right.
High jump pit has concrete and poison, and I don't know of any other school our size that's not combined for track that isn't capable of hosting a home track meet.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, and Tim, you're up.
School budget update number four, and, uh, we talked a lot about this information with some new information that, as Chris and I have been presenting to community groups, we've started to touch on this. But I went down the, uh, I got as much detail as I could on what the public can expect, depending on what municipality they live in. Uh, fiscal, we've talked about the board goal. We are getting down there. Our calendar is getting short. Less than a week from now, the budget must be got, be, must be completed, and many trees must be killed on May first to make sure we have paper, uh, two-hundred-page document in every school building, as well as the community libraries. Uh, May eighth, we'll have our board meeting and our budget hearing, and then May fourteenth is our deadline for mailing the budget notice. Uh, we are almost a hundred percent complete with the budget newsletter. I just have one thing to finish tomorrow, and then Chris Castavecca has it all ready to go. Uh, May twenty-first, right here in the auditorium foyer, eight AM to eight PM, will be the community vote for the budget, as well as our Board of Education candidates and two other propositions. We did finally get a New York State budget Friday night just before the musical, and, uh, it was nothing exciting. Foundation aid, we got eleven thousand dollar increase, which Chris had spent by the time we got to the taxing. And some of the other aids actually decreased, so we are still about the same. And back to that eleven thousand dollar increase, that just made us get back to the amount we received last year. Whole harmless was held in this budget, that all the districts that have been getting overfunded for years continue to get overfunded, while us districts that were underfunded and finally got caught up have to hold for another year. So we're hoping next year or the following year that they will, they said they adjusted the CPI, but obviously, we got the same amount as last year, so they didn't really correct the CPI. We're hoping in the next two years, we'll start to get our fair share again, but it may be the opposite. So we are not only planning for this year's budget, we are planning for the next two years maybe not getting the help we need. Uh, govern, uh, propose, I shouldn't say governor's aid more, but the provide, proposed budget, uh, building aid, they did finally correct that, so it, uh, in the governor's budget, it was about a million four and a million, uh, one. They got the, our new project is finally up there for the early aid start, but the difference is still about the same. That negative two hundred, just over two hundred fifty thousand is, and aid is also offset by the same amount less in debt service for this year, so that is not as big of a negative as it seems on paper. The tax cap continues to be four point two seven. We could increase taxes by three hundred forty thousand. Uh, two thousand four, two thousand five budget, uh, salaries have been updated. Um, we, the RJFA ratified their contract and voted, and the board will be looking at, to approve us releasing those funds, so that has been updated, as well as the salaries. Also, the board will be voting on maybe a new new school principal tonight, so that has been finalized as well. So the salaries are up to date. Equipment, um, is the same as it was before, um, and hopefully, the equipment is enough. This year, we're getting a little close, mostly because I think the board has heard, uh, BOC's no longer will provide a driver's ed car. So that is a thirty to forty thousand dollar expense in equipment that we did not anticipate, and, uh, those, uh, requests are due by this Friday, so we'll have more idea on that, and we'll be waiting to talk about if we're going to stay with a gas car or look into electric car at that time, depending on the price and what, how it sets up. We have received about five or six, um, bids, or it's a, it's not really a bid. It goes through the New York State process, but none of them are anywhere near here, so if we do have to go pick up the car, we'll be working on figuring that out as well. Uh, supplies, contractual benefits, and debt service are all pretty much the same as last month or the last presentation, other than now that the contracts have been finalized. We do have more solid numbers for them. Uh, revenue, uh, we, the state aid number was about the same. We kept, I kept that the same, because even though, uh, the state aid numbers might have changed, like BOC's shows a seventy-five thousand dollar increa, or decrease, but BOC's has a tendency to not get their items into the state in time, so we have to project what we're actually gonna receive based on what we spent, and we anticipate that will still be right around, if not more than that million-dollar figure, especially since we've added some new BOC services this year, including our communication team, just to name one. Or not team, but person in services. Uh, tax levy, a two-point-three-eight percent increase is what we're still believing we need to balance the budget, as well as a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in the use of reserves and a hundred thousand dollars from the debt service. That debt service is interest and such we've made on borrowings from previous capital projects. That's why debt service seems like a expenditure, but it's actually a revenue in this case. Tax rate change, uh, down to twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, seventeen point eight-three, which is about a thirty-five percent decrease since fourteen fifteen. A lot of that, as we've talked about, maybe not at the board meeting, but in, in the community, people are starting to realize, as assessments go up, it automatically makes the tax rate go down. Anticipated tax change by municipalities. It's good to get education out, so we're going to touch on it on very, uh, we, Tim reached out, and myself reached out, from all of the assessors and got what their numbers were at this time. Their numbers aren't finalized, because they're still trying to, uh, work through them, but we believe that these are pretty accurate and, uh, give us at least a baseline for the lowest levels. So as you can see, uh, assessment increases went anywhere from last year to this year, from eight percent to eight point six-five percent. Um, another touch on, point on that I don't want to forget is the four municipalities, Hopewell, the two Manchesters, and Schwartzville, all had reassessments this year. Farmington had rea, and a reassessment last year, and the assessor told us they will also have a reassessment next year. So Farmington did not waste any time reassessing. That full evaluation is just total, though, so a lot of that may be, I assume, due to new properties being built. I don't think the assessments in Farmington, especially after last year, are going to go up eight point pers, eight point six percent. I assume a lot of that is new development, since that's where the majority of the new development is in this area. So for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house with basic star, um, twenty-three, twenty-four, the reason why it says a hundred and fifty thousand for Farmington is last year, that was our only, um, municipality that's at a hundred percent equalization rate. Uh, Hopewell is, was at eighty, uh, the bottom three were at eighty-five, and Hopewell was at eighty, eighty-three percent last year. So that is the amount of what a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house would be taxed at, minus last, last year's tax rates. Uh, nineteen point seven nine was the, uh, true value tax rate, 'cause that's, Farmington was the only one that was a hundred percent equalization rate. Because all the municipalities were, were reassessed this year, they automatically become a hundred percent, um, equalization rate for this year, so the bottom four are all, um, a hundred percent, as well as Farmington is now ninety, ninety-four percent, I believe. Did you say? Ninety-four percent, yes. So took, uh, took last year's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house value and multiplied by the percentage for that municipality that the assessments went up to get what a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, if everyone's treated equally, that's what a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house would be assessed at. We subtracted the star rate from last year and the star rate from this year, multiplied by the new tax rates, so seventeen point eight-three. As we said on the previous slides, Farmington is eighteen point nine-seven, means Farmington, conservatively, will be at about a third of a percent increase. Hopewell and the Village of Manchester will be the highest at, this is with our two percent increase in taxes as well, just over a three percent. Town of Manchester will be point seven-nine. Village of Schwartzville is showing a minor negative, but to be in all truthful, don't want to overpromise, that number was negative a high percentage. It was over five percent. So.
But that's only if your, the value of your home never changed. If your a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home was still a hundred and fifty thousand.
Nope, that's if, uh, that's if, if you're in Schwartzville, that's if your a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house went up eight point two-six percent.
Thank you.
Yep, and that's why they are actually showing a negative, 'cause that Schwartzville went up less, almost less than half as much as the other three municipalities that just got reassessed. So those three municipalities are going to take on more of the burden. I think I mentioned last time, but it might have been at the Lions Club meeting, Hopewell and Canandaigua is going to take a large hit, 'cause Hopewell was the only reassessment in the Canandaigua School District. So that eighteen percent would might be, will probably be, or that, uh, three point two-five, if Canandaigua was to go, was to go on to two point three-eight, would be much higher. So that was just to give an idea, because especially since even at three point two-five, we've heard a lot of, oh, my assessment, or my taxes are gonna go up eight percent, ten percent. If everybody's taxes went up eight or ten percent, we wouldn't need any state aid. We'd have twenty-two million dollars in taxes alone, so. Onto the three-part budget. Uh, any budget, we have to report the three different program, program, obviously being our largest percentage of our budget. Um, about seventeen point, or not, about seventy point five-eight percent of the budget last year, uh, increased to seventy point seven-six percent this year. Uh, capital, uh, down just over percent. That is because of the debt service payment being much lower this year, and the administrative, uh, increase, uh, ten point one-eight to eleven point one-three percent. Total budget, uh, the projected budget didn't get updated on there, but it is that, uh, twenty-two nine million, or twenty-two million nine hundred thousand number. Proposition two will be our bus purchases, two large sixty-five passenger buses, not to exceed four hundred thirty thousand, one mini wheelchair bus, not to exceed seventy thousand. RJ's transportation aid is ninety percent. Think I mentioned before, if there was no cap on transportation aid, ours would be about ninety-seven percent aid. Uh, straight up minus, uh, we pick up a lot of kids that are inside, uh, a mile and a half, so we don't quite get that full ninety percent, but, uh, that's if, if we were at a hundred percent. Proposition three, a student ex facto Board of Education member, student would be a member of the Board of Education, will not vote, will not attend the executive session, or have access to confidential information. Proposition four, uh, one expiring seat, Lombardi. Uh, we have two, uh, candidates. Monday at five o'clock was the deadline, uh, for getting their petitions in. We, uh, Kim and I drew the names at nine AM on Tuesday, and, uh, that is the order, as the people, uh, the two individuals will appear on the ballot. Uh, Jennifer Spears and Abigail Marion, a term that runs from, uh, July first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. To the, uh, that's, yep.
That says student, I thought we were going to say two.
Yeah. I have it in, I have it on the ballot as student.
So students, okay, yep, students would be a member of the Board of Education. Any questions? And because this meeting is so late, we'll be right back here in about two weeks and, uh, sorry, Chris.
Yep, just one point of clarification from the board. Uh, the RJFA contract is in this meeting, principal's contract is not in this meeting, no. So that's okay. And then just another item that Tim didn't highlight on there that I just appreciated from Tim this year. I was just taking notes when he was going through this. Tim talks about presentations that he's done within the community, some of you have been there, but I just wanted to reiterate what he's done since January. So he's done every board meeting since January, he's come to my town hall in March. Uh, we've done the Lions men group, we're doing Alliance Women, I believe, either next week or next.
It's like the week before the budget.
Yep, right, before the budget. And then we've also done Rotary, um, just knowing that that was something that we've talked about as a group, of really getting out and having those conversations about, um, how we're presenting the budget and how we're, um, informing and educating our community around these changes and being timely with it too. So that we're, we're having those conversations even when we don't even know what the state budget's going to be like, so. Uh, and then there's two other that Tim has still didn't have, which is, Tim will be meeting with student groups, um, early in the month to talk to them about our budget and then also with, uh, the Red Jacket staff, so there's awareness. So I just wanted to add.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, that's great.
Yep, we've always done the students and participation, uh, it's not called participation in government anymore, but, uh, we'll continue that as well, so. And we've added a bunch and, uh, we'll re, we're reaching out to the principals because we haven't asked them, we can come up with any comments. Thank you. Everyone's good to go with questions or anything like that? Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, move this party forward. Um, under new business, we've got a request for, uh, recognition or dedication. So hopefully you guys have already had a chance to read through. We have a letter from Sue Franceski, uh, ready to propose that the school recognize, uh, community member, Mark Pepper. I was gonna, I know you guys have had a chance to read it, but, um, she says, I'm ready to propose that the school recognize a community member that's spent over four decades supporting Red Jacket athletic events, even when he didn't have any family member participating in those events. Um, she noted some of the sports that Mark can be found at, uh, and that he was inducted into the Hall of Fame as Red Jacket's number one fan in two thousand eight. Um, and she's proposing that the district acknowledge Mark Pepper in a way, uh, as she framed it, in a way they choose to be appropriate in the financial means. She gave a few examples and requested to be part of the process if possible. And so, yep, board is certainly pleased to be able to consider that. And then also you guys have in your packet our, um, district policy on public recognition and dedication, which is, you know, very much in line with the request, um, from a timing and from a kind of a framing standpoint of the request. And so my, I don't want to open this up for discussion in a moment here, my suggestion to you all, and had some conversations with Chris and we can continue that here as a group, but, um, at least in my couple of years here, we, I don't think we've had one of these specifically come through, but, um, there's a lot of different things this kind of thing can take. And my suggestion to you all, should you agree, is that we essentially refer this to the appropriate department. So in this case, it would be athletics, if it were, you know, music related, you might ask Chris to work with that department to review the request, kind of look at historically, what types of things have we done, what might, might make sense in the district from a, um, whether it's a physical plaque or something like that, how we would do any sort of dedication, and then come back to us with a recommendation, something that we could consider and go, yep, that's great, or here's our questions, or, um, we could recommend, uh, adjustments or what have you. But it would ultimately lead to, um, the board's responsibility in that policy is to ultimately approve such a dedication, so. Um, that's my recommendation, but at this point, um, I just want to hear what you guys think about the matter.
I'll go with your recommendation, I think that makes sense.
Hi, I'm Mo, so it's a good place to start, where do you have the department? You know, work, work the process, that's what you have to do, first of all. Work the process and see where that goes with Shannon and her department. And then get back to us.
Would this be for individuals who have, unfortunately, they are deceased? Or is this employee, current employees, retired?
Well, the criteria, the policy says one of the following, but not limited to the following, retire from the district or deceased. And it might be a good time too, as you're looking, you know, at this year, when you look at policy, um, to review this policy. Because I did look at a few others in board drafts, which is great in the morning, um, just to see what other districts have, um, included in their dedication and recognition.
All right, yeah, yeah, cool. Yeah, I think, in my opinion, I mean, far as I'm concerned, we're pleased to consider. Someone goes so far out of their way to say this person deserves recognition, recognition, then, you know, it's incumbent upon us to at least evaluate that and figure out what can we do, you know, to help.
There's a lot of people in the community that know the guy.
Yeah.
When he gave the decision, it's a huge.
Okay. All right, cool, thank you. That, um, we don't need to vote right now, we'll refer that and then we get to a point where we've got a proposal to consider, we'll, we'll go from there and action. All right, we'll move to item B. All right, four county SBA. I'll, speaking for myself, I, I, I value what you do, I've been able to attend a lot of their events, they, um, you know, they offer a lot of local, uh, opportunities for us, which is appreciated in my personal opinion. Um, we've got here a ballot, um, requesting that we participate in elections of officers. Each school board gets one collective vote, kind of the way we operate. And, um, so what I, I guess I would ask is, if you've had a chance to review this, essentially there are two candidates for two officer positions. There is a, and there are two financial, um, uh, decisions to be made. And then there's an acceptance of bylaws and policy changes. I did actually have, I asked Kim to provide, um, it wasn't in the packet, uh, but at your seat, you've got a summary of the changes to the bylaws. I did review it, it's largely, um, related to officer positions and elections. My take on it is they're making it a little easier for us to help them conduct business because it sometimes is tough to get the quorum because everyone else has got so much going on, it's quite sensitive. Um, so that, that's the last item on there. And all I guess I would ask from you guys is, I think we can take one vote on this. Would anyone like to do multiple votes? Like, let me ask that before, or can we think we can do this in one, also?
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott.
One, just one.
Do one, oh, sorry.
That's a one.
Yep, very good. Um, okay, so, um, so the board hereby, um, votes, I'm gonna, this is kind of a, we'll have to word it out because I don't have all the verbiage, but essentially what we're going to do is vote for, uh, a yes in all five positions on this ballot and we're going to conduct one vote as a board. So can I get a motion for that? Motion Lisa, and a second, Chelsea, okay. Um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, motion carries, thank you very much. All right. We good to go there, Kim?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, um, from there we will move on to minutes. We've got two meetings here. All right. The board hereby approves. Board hereby accepts the minutes of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, uh, as presented.
Motion.
Motion Lisa, and a second. Chelsea, thank you very much. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Awesome, thank you. All right, the board hereby accepts the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four Board of Education regular meeting as presented. Motion please. Please, motion Lisa, and a second from Chelsea, thank you very much. Any questions on this one? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you very much. All right, moving forward. Personnel report. Per our practice date, we have done personnel by consent agenda and I'll just ask as a courtesy if anyone has any concern for that, this going on. How are you? Very good. Uh, the board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following personnel report as per the consensus agenda. Make a motion please. Motion Chelsea, and a second from Lisa, you guys are carrying the weight today. Any, uh, questions? I guess, kind of forward to vote going, so. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, CSE and CPSC, and it was voluminous. I feel like I gotta ask, uh, at least if nothing else, but to highlight, I'm sure a lot of hard work going on, but.
Yeah, we're, we're on my place for our annual season and, um, we have CPSC in our, we have preschoolers and grade twelve all the way down to six. So we had some great this week in a couple of makeup meetings and because the board meeting was moved a couple of weeks later, that's why it's a little bit bigger. Our next one or two is a little bit smaller, but we've been very busy and it's been more great, so.
Is it unusual, like, have twenty-one preschoolers?
Yes, it is. We talked about that.
I read, when I saw that count, it was twenty-one.
It's the incoming kindergarten class, there's a really big bump and it's not just us, it's everywhere. And those public babies that are coming in kindergarten legitimately.
Been that long?
Um, but what I, what I am pleasantly happy with, having CSE here in the region, it looks like a bump, not a trend. It looks like a free book or a happen, building back to normal numbers across the region and probably everywhere, hopefully, so. But that incoming kindergarten class, everywhere, it's huge.
And there was nineteen seniors. That seemed like an absorbent amount of, 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 nineteen.
We're excited, we're excited about that, they're doing great. We've got really great success stories and I will celebrate them too, which I really love.
I had a meeting this week for my son, um, and it, I thought, I reached out to Karen, she did a beautiful job. It was very welcoming and, um, productive meeting and it was, um, I would just really appreciate it. Those could be difficult meetings for parents, um, and stressful and I thought you did a really good job bringing everyone together, so I really appreciated that, just to let everyone know that.
All right, well, let's go ahead and if we have any further questions before we go, we can go for that, but, um, uh, I'll go ahead with our action here. Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the CSE and CPSC recommendations as presented. Motion Lisa and Scott for a second, thanks for changing the rules, Scott. Okay, um, I know we had a little discussion there. Are there any questions? Uh, further questions for Karen or otherwise? Awesome, okay, um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right. Reports and correspondence, and before I go too far into this, Chris, you'll have to forgive me, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit here. Going forward, we do want to provide some opportunities for our, we've, we've moved more so toward a strategy of committees to handle some things and I think that's a great strategy, myself, although all of you, I think almost everyone's on a committee of some kind, there's a handful of them, we've spread that out. Um, going forward in the May, are we going to provide some opportunities as part of a regular agenda you feel for?
Yeah, we could add meetings, update the reports and the response because everybody right now, well, four, four members are on an active committee that's currently going, so mascot committee, Scott, Chelsea, and then Matt and Bart just start on the team, the gap project committee, so we can add those for May, so that on May, uh, the May meeting, we have an update on those committee votes.
So you're on notice, you do not need a PowerPoint because honestly, you're going to have to try to hold a candle to Jake, but that is going to be difficult. But if you, if you, yeah, he's, he's going to hold office hours for anyone, no. Um, no, but if, uh, if you're just willing to provide, you know, just talk for a minute or two about your experience and, and kind of what an update is for some of the committees you're on, I would certainly appreciate that. I think that way everyone, we wait for everyone to get to speed, so we'll plan on that in a couple of weeks and we can be ready, so.
Okay, so.
You got the, all right, the time, slow.
Scott agrees to the day, he won't be here.
Are you, would you like to address?
Yeah, we need to have a place off, it's important time.
Okay, I just didn't see that.
Okay, that's okay.
Very good, okay, so, um, you've got your claims, so the reports and correspondence. Sorry, sidebar here, just want to make sure Chris was planning to address us as we normally would, it just wasn't out here, so I guess overstated on my part, but. Claims auditor report is in your packet, any questions on that? Okay, all right, with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bernard for superintendent's report.
Thank you, and, yeah, as Jamie touched on, I think moving ahead, what we'll do is under reports and correspondence, we'll add those committees. I'm going to touch base on some of those topics tonight, but obviously members who are on those committees, feel free to jump in as we discuss some very important topics in our district. Uh, you know, first I, I just wanted to point out, um, that has been, has been talked about tonight, but folks that are here and the board, just reminding friends and family members and our community that on May twenty-first, from eight AM to eight PM, will be in this location, um, to do our budget vote. And if people are looking for absentee ballots, please reach out to Kim. And absentee ballots need to be completed and returned to Kim by five PM on the day of the budget vote. So, um, just from, from that perspective, and then some more celebration and appreciation items, I want to congratulate our cast and crew and all of the wonderful volunteers for the outstanding production of our school musical. Uh, thank you to our music department, our talented students, the number of volunteers, I, I can't even list, um, and to the entire cast and crew for entertaining production. Uh, I know I brought my children and it was something that I appreciated, the amount of work that I know our students put into that, the adults, the volunteers, our music boosters, the list goes on. So thank you to those, to those folks that lift in a really, uh, a big project. Uh, and then I also wanted to point out that in the last high school news, uh, newsletter update, we had a lot of celebrations of student success and, uh, Mr. Jordan, our high school principal, has done a great job of capturing those and presenting them to our community. We had students who were recognized for a number of, number of different items locally, um, and in the region for different successes. I wanted to focus tonight on the news that we were shared around our recent dedication of the valedictorian and the salutatorian. Um, so for those that have looked at the newsletter, um, we had our valedictorian was Katie Pinner. And just to give you a little background on Katie, she is the president of our National Honor Society. She's treasurer of both the senior class and student council and a member of masterminds. She also plays the saxophone in the band and participates soccer, indoor, outdoor, track and field. Next year she plans to attend Bigginton University studying biological science and the pre-vet track, track. After college, she hopes to attend veterinary school for many of her practice. Our salutatorian is Ms. Ella Lor. Ella is a three-sport athlete participating in soccer, basketball and indoor track. She's a member of our national society, Honor Society, chorus and band, where she plays the baritone. After high school, she plans to earn a degree in social work and went on to say that social work has always interested her as a result that she can help and give back to others. Being able to fight for social justice and improve people's lives allows me to make a positive impact on many of people. So we have fantastic students at Red Jacket and I just thought it would be on point to highlight two of our seniors who we know, um, we dedicated our salutatorian and our valedictorian. If you want to see the other items, our district newsletter captured many of those celebrations, so. Just wanted to add that note. Um, another note from a planning purpose for our community and to our board is that, um, we have adjusted our school calendar and Friday, May twenty-fourth, due to the fact that we only used one, um, of our three allotted school emergency closure days, Friday, May twenty-fourth will now be a additional day off for the district. Uh, many districts in our region are doing the same thing because we had a, a mild winter in which we didn't have to utilize the three allotted days that we were only set aside. Um, we have communicated that with families and will continue to communicate as we get closer to that date. Um, another, just in an item, and then this is where Chelsea and Scott can jump in at any point, I wanted to give a little update around our mascot adjustments and the rebranding process that we've been going through since, really, the fall. Um, you know, that committee's been coming together for months and having conversations, surveying the community, um, and providing feedback as we move this work forward. Uh, they meet at least once a month and, um, this past month, um, they were providing all of the data from the last survey. Um, and in that, they will be moving forward and providing an additional survey that will go out to, uh, students as early as the end of this week, um, and the community quickly to follow. Uh, it will be a digital format in most, for most folks, but we will provide paper copies as we've done in the past. So there will be QR codes in different locations in the community for people to be able to access an authentic device. So there will be QR codes in different locations in the community for people to be able to access it on their device. If they don't do that, under the QR code will be directions for where they can get a paper copy at district office, or we will mail them to them if they call district office and make that request. Because we want to make sure that every voice is heard. Uh, Scott or Chelsea, was there anything I didn't capture from that?
I just, I didn't want to make the comment, I mean, you kind of highlighted it in the meeting, right? But to share what you, really, what people were, like, the last meeting, and Jacob was there also. Um, the sharing, the conversation, the community involvement, I mean, it was just a really good, well, long-term meeting, and a lot of good things happened.
You, you could see the power of the group.
I'm extremely pleased with the result from the group. Especially, the most sublimated concern, you, you told something that, you know, you created, I think we had the best possible result.
And, and the, and the way that it transpired, I think Scott captured perfectly, it was ninety minutes of really intense conversation. And so, in so many, in, in really good ways, with lots of different perspectives at that table, and, and it, it panned out with a result that folks will see at the end of the week of those three, those, those last couple of options, and really looking forward to getting that, that feedback to move us in, we're staying on par with the goal that we set, which was to try to have a recommendation to the board by the June board meeting. So, that still is the case. If we do need to adjust, we've all been flexible with the idea that we can adjust if we need to. But, you know, one of the big feedbacks that we perceived was that, you know, moving forward into next year, the hope would be to have something in place for our kindergarteners and everybody in between up to our seniors.
It felt like every voice was heard. It felt like every single person in that group had something to say at some point, which is, it was a little while, but.
Thank you for that. Um, also with that, talking about updates, we, we have kicked off our capital project committee, which I've shared from the board. Um, Mr. Sherwood and Ms. Gardner are members of right now. We had our first meeting on the fifteenth, and it was just really an introduction meeting where we talked about what the group's goals were gonna be, and we just did a tour of the facilities that Mr. Burns has led, um, in the past, and led again to highlight and look at and put eyes on the different items, some of which Jacob shared tonight, others of which things that we see in, from staff members, but other folks we see as community members. That group will gather, um, more often over the next couple of months, so we're meeting on next Monday, on the twenty ninth. Uh, a large committee made up of fif- fifteen members that includes staff, community, board, um, the, uh, the architects with SEI, with lots of representation. Um, and that group will meet next, uh, Monday to do that work and have conversations around what may be a potential capital project. Barbara, Matt, anything to add on that? Okay. Um, and last, just a couple important dates, uh, I tried to capture for everybody in this conversation. Um, obviously, we have an exciting weekend for many reasons. We have the derby that's coming up, and all of the excitement that happens within our school and community surrounding that. So, all of that information is, is this, all of that is taking place this weekend. Uh, we also have our prom ball that's taking place, uh, Saturday night, um, at six PM. And then we will reconvene back here in about short two weeks, on May eighth, for our, um, May board meeting. And also, that same night is the final service learning fair at five PM for our students. So I heard today that they have nine days, I believe, for the service learning stuff together. So, good luck to those students, uh, and that's it.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our team, uh, who will be here for me next week. Uh, all right, that concludes reports and correspondence, and we'll move to financial reports. So you have in your, uh, packets, the financial and treasurer's report. Do we have any questions on that? All right, I'll go ahead and accept those on behalf of the board. Getting good at this now, here. Okay, and, okay, next up is establishment of driver's ed appendix J. Uh, this is pretty typical, I know we've had some discussion about driver's ed. Let me go ahead and get the motion out there. Um, I think, you know, there's been, you know, some interesting moves as a district and things like that, although this is kind of our, our standard, uh, fare for this upcoming summer. So, uh, the board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to have the tuition fee for the twenty twenty four summer driver's education program remain at one hundred and fifty dollars. Get a motion from Lisa, thank you, and a second for that. Chelsea, thank you very much. All right, very good. Um, any discussion on this one?
I do, can I just add quick, I know, we've had a great conversation as a board, I appreciated the insight that was brought to light around this. As you heard from Mr. Burns tonight, one of the first things that we're looking at doing is how we can bring this, um, back to the district. Um, currently, we utilize that BOSIS option, and some of that is variables that we don't control, that they, that have been challenging, more particularly this year with the vehicle conversation. So we are starting to look at and looking at building a program that we can bring here, and what that cost would look like, having our own vehicle, all of those things. So I just want the board to know that that conversation is heard, and that we're moving, but like everything, we just want to make sure that we can do it in a way that's gonna work for this year, for the students who started, but also looking ahead, how can we provide it maybe differently, or in a way that could, could increase engagement? Because our numbers have been pretty similar over the last three years, and looking with Mr. George, we've had between thirteen and fifteen students each year. Um, so I know from the members of the board and from myself, that we, that's something we want to look at, how we can grow that. So, we are a hundred percent agree with that.
Do we have the BOSIS card this summer?
No.
Ooh.
So we're trying to move through that process. They did not make us aware of that until about a month ago.
So surprised.
So we're still working, we, we think we have, we think we have some wasteland. So, we think we're okay, we'll be able to.
But it has to be like a couple, like a city, and it can't be.
No, yeah, while we're doing. Yeah, there's, there's some things that we have to work out with then, from that, and, yeah, but I think we have planned everything for, for the summer.
For the summer.
Yep, and then going into next summer, hopefully, bringing back a little bit more locally than we can have it, so we're not caught off guard on this.
Did BOSIS pull their vehicles away from all the districts? I mean, do they service other districts besides us?
So all the cars were broken down, so maybe somebody can provide a break, that's all they can buy. The cars are disappointing, because they use, they use a whole problem here, they just couldn't do it.
Oh, so it's the condition of the car that's more dangerous.
Yep.
Oh, good.
All their cars, so nobody will provide cars for any more time. Cars that are crossing the, the next region.
They're not doing it, oh, okay.
They have to drive, they have the teachers, they have some of the pieces that come to share with us, the hard parts.
The hard parts.
So that will be our goal this year, too. It may, there's, there's, the vehicle side of it could be something that we could start to look at, and then we're gonna maintain the BOSIS instructors for this year, and then we'll get the instructor side. Because that goes with certification and all those things. But we are set with instructors, and we think we'll be able to, we'll have plenty of vehicles.
I didn't realize the numbers were so low for a time, so it's gonna be nice to.
Yep, that's two, thirteen, and fifteen. And just, the car is going to be multi-use, we have other uses other than driver's ed, so. We have, yes, we have, we have another waste of use of this one.
Well, um, and I know we've had some, yeah, I'll get you there. I just wanted to say, I, I've had some spirited discussion on this, and the district is moving in a great direction. I want to thank Matt specifically for a lot of advocacy on this one, I think we're taking steps, so hopefully, you know, that's felt at least. Anything else before we vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, we'll keep it moving. Uh, okay. We got cooperative bidding, for those of you who've been doing this a few years, this is a standard, um, participation that we do around, uh, co-op programming procurement. The board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the attached cooperative bid resolution. Can I get a motion please? So there is one. Lisa, thank you, Amy, second, all right. Any questions, probably directed to Tim or Chris Brady? That's good to go, okay, very good. All in favor then? Aye. Any opposed? None? Good to go, all right, motion carries, thank you very much. And appendix L is some, bears some similarity to what we did for, um, Port County SBA, although a little more formal here. We've got a BOSIS, um, elections and budget vote. And I, I am, what did we say, Kim? I'm gonna do the three, I'm gonna do this in one shot, or separate resolutions?
There's three, um, positions, and there's three individuals. Unless you feel strongly about not ruling from one of those, I would do it general.
Okay, so, let's take.
And then do the administrative.
Perfect, yeah, so, so, um, the first item on the table, um, is gonna be that the board will vote yes for the three candidates for the three, um, board members.
Their three year positions.
Yep, yep, so three, so we've got Pam Pendleton, OJ Sailor, and Lungay, three candidate, the three, uh, candidates for three roles, so, um, are you guys okay with going that route here? So, can I get a motion from Lisa?
Oh, awesome.
All right, motion from Lisa and a second from Amy, very good. Any other questions on that, with the three candidates for the three board position? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, good to go there, thank you very much. And then we have a budget vote. So, the Board of Education of Manchester Shortsville Central School District, uh, approves the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five tentative administrative budget, Part One of the Wing Figure Lakes Board of Cooperative Educational Services, in the amount of three million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, can I get a motion please?
Motion.
Motion Lisa and a second from Amy, thank you. Any questions you have, well, I guess I should have said it beforehand, but you do have a summary of your budget, make your seat. Okay, all right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Very good, motion carries, thank you very much. All right, we made it through that one, thank you all. By the way, I don't know if you have a chance to read through the candidate form, of course, we'll need three for three seats, but I think they're all returning, or they're all reading the reelections and seemingly well-qualified, so, you know, get a feel of it about that. Um, okay, appendix M, and this is a pretty big deal, and I, I just wanna say thank you, and, and I, I think congratulations as well to groups who, from all the accounts I've heard, worked really, really well, really hard to get to an agreement that, as I understand it, folks are genuinely very pleased with. And as a district, to move us forward with a, um, an agreement with the teachers' union that served our district well, um, there's certain things we do on this board that, and, and, and not that we took, I'll take all the credit, but to be able to move this forward, um, is, is a big step for the district, so something just big, this is one of those, so. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this resolution. The board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following resolution. Whereas the superintendent and the Red Jacket Faculty Association have on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, met and reached agreement on terms and conditions of employment for a successor collective negotiating agreement, known as the agreement, for the period of timing from July one, twenty twenty four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, and whereas the association has ratified the terms of this agreement on April nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Now, therefore, upon the affirmation, affirmative recommendation of the superintendent of schools for the Manchester Shortsville Central School District, it is hereby resolved that the Manchester Shortsville Board of Education approves the necessary funds for the July one, twenty twenty four, to June thirty, twenty twenty seven agreement between the Manchester Shortsville Central School District and the Red Jacket Faculty Association. There it is.
Motion.
Motion Lisa and a second from Amy, awesome. Um, you all have the contract, you have the tentative, you have the language, it's up for approval right now. Um, anything you'd like to add, Chris, or any questions here?
No, I, I know, but I've had conversations with the board throughout this process, and just, I appreciate that RRJFA's leadership group, I appreciate the negotiation team that they brought together. I appreciate the, the support of Mr. Burns through this process, and, uh, you know, I, I think that it's, it walked away with a collaborative agreement that's sustainable, um, and the effort to support what we know are the tremendous people that do the work every day on, on the ground with our kids, and, um, and so, I'm just, I'm just appreciative of that and, um, of the, the, the relationship and the trust that's fostered through this process, I think is really important for, for our district and, and the culture that we're continuing to, to try to build and create.
And I think, I speak for all of us when we say, we appreciate how you prioritized the, this, um, with the team, and changed some things up and, and trying to, in record time, get a contract that was acceptable on both sides, and such a good agreement. I, I think it's great in this day and age when we're, it can be difficult to get teachers, and we want all of our teachers happy, and, um, so we, we appreciate, I appreciate that a lot.
I, I would like to say that, uh, that everybody talks about supporting the teachers, but this is one thing that actually is factual, like, yeah, we are supporting you, we understand the economic situation for everybody in that field, and we're correcting it, and we'll always try and correct it, and we'll always try and keep it up to date, so if they're, when they're in front of the classroom, they're not thinking about visa bill, or rent, or car payment, or whatever.
And the board has tracked this closely, provided some input, and they go for that, so. All right, unless there's anything else, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Motion carries, really emphatic, a lot of ayes, very good. Thank you all, and let's see, we are just about to the tail end here. We've got property tax report card, this is a procedural item, contains information, it's kind of.
We tried, this is the biggest I could get.
Oh, yeah, if you can read it, you got something good going on, even with glasses, uh, yeah.
Listen, if you use your computer, you know, it's.
Yes, yes, yes. No, Lisa.
Sure use up all the papers, so.
All right, all right, uh, so, uh, the board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the property tax report card. Lisa and a second, Chelsea, you guys are busy tonight. Um, any questions, you guys, I mean, you heard from Tim, I, but if you do have anything, of course. Good to go, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries, all right, we're good. Um, that concludes our agenda, so, can I get a motion from a general? Motion Lisa? Second remaining. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Unless anybody wants to go on, any opposed?
Everybody wants to stay.
Okay, thank you very much.